I'd like to call to order the May 17, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you choose as Commissioner Hill introduces the invocation and the pledge.
Tonight, we're very fortunate to have with us Mrs. Martha Christian. She is Worship Leader at the Broadway Melrose Campus, and she's going to lead the prayer, but if you ever have the chance to come hear her sing, she has a voice like an angel. So Martha.
It is an honor to be here. Let us pray. Father God Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, God, we thank you for this moment to be here in this place together, knowing that you have strategically put every single person here for your purpose, a purpose that is greater than ourselves. God, we pray tonight for a reminder of why we are here. God, we pray for your spirit of unity to fall in this place. God, we pray for a bigger awareness of things that can happen and ripple out of our own town. God, we pray for eyes to see the people that are unseen in our town. God, we pray for a heart for the people that have voices smaller than our own. God, we pray that you would revive in us a desire to love and lead and serve and care for the people in our care. God, we thank you for this time. We pray for a spirit of love and unity and peace in this place, God, that we would do in this place greater things than we could ever dream of because of you. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Also, we have with us tonight a 4th grader from McNeil Elementary, Mr. Aaron Burgett, and he's accompanied by his mother tonight, Jennifer, and his sister Amber Lynn, and his father is busy working at the Holiday Inn University Plaza. So Aaron, thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's the McNeil Admirals, right? Go Admirals. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight, sir?
I have none.
Any from the commission? Do you have any comments to advise us?
Mayor, there'll be a need for an executive session. Katie will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 62810C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Any other comments, sir?
No.
All right, approval of minutes for the May 3, 2016 meeting?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any comments or corrections? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
We provide a time at our regular meetings for people to make comments on items that are not on the regular agenda. I'm going to invite the people to do that right now. Mr. Howard, I think you're first up tonight.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I come tonight as the president of Cedar Ridge Area Neighborhood Association. The recent decision on, I guess it was May 3, at the closing of Robinson Road has drawn our attention, as I would suspect was expected, or I hope was expected. My request tonight is very simple, that we be permitted a public hearing so that we could voice our concerns, so that the issues could be clearly laid out. I think you would appreciate the fact that there's a lot of misinformation out there. I'm concerned that the correct information would be out there, and be involved in the process. Cedar Ridge is not just any neighborhood, it's a very active neighborhood. That is a very important road to our neighborhood and to the neighborhood around that, not just neighborhoods, but also businesses. And I understand that plans have been made, creative solutions. To my knowledge, no one in our neighborhood has even been consulted, asked. We live there, we drive the roads every day. We simply would ask for a public hearing so that we could have some communication. The communications that we have received were first through the paper and then through a letter and speaking with Mr. Paragon and a phone call. So that's my request on behalf of our neighborhood tonight.
Howard, if you'd allow me just a moment, on behalf, part of my job as mayor is to make sure that the public sentiment is brought into this discussion, so I'm going to have to apologize to you on my behalf. It's my fault for not participating with the neighborhood in that it was our understanding that that part of the railroad, the railroad who is there first counts. And it's my understanding that from about the river to almost Old Morgantown Road, the city was there first, so they have to give us a lot of leeway in whether or not a crossing is closed. In this case, they were there first, and we were using their right-of-way by permission, and they revoked their permission. And when they talked about having a public hearing, we should do that, and I apologize that we haven't done it. I'm afraid that if you come to the public hearing expecting a change, I don't know that CSX will make their change, but we'll be happy to arrange that for you if you think that would benefit the neighborhood.
Well, I think it benefits you guys as well. I just think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I understand and fairly aware of all of the information and all of the policies and procedures, and have learned more about railroads than things that I ever expected to in the last few weeks. I think if, at the very minimum, it's an olive branch of saying, because we have no defense. I mean, if your hands were tied, think of our hands. And we had no voice except to respond to an editor or to come here and that. And I think it's just, we as citizens have no voice except for what voice we have through you guys. And so I think that's our desire and what has been expressed to me through our neighborhood. And that is my desire, is just to kind of understand, maybe there's nothing that can be done. Maybe there are some creative solutions. I know traffic counts have been done. Traffic counts do not accurately represent the importance of that road. When you figure in Emmett and when you figure the obstacle course you have to go through to get onto that side of the road, it's just significant. And to have had a 12-minute discussion in-house on that, I know there were other discussions outside, but it just does not seem like our, we were very represented, and so we would like that opportunity.
Yeah, a couple questions. What misinformation have you received?
You know, I think Mayor Wilkerson expressed information that is not known. I mean, if you're just a neighbor living in the city, you don't have any idea of the regulations and the way, I'm amazed at the power of a railroad.
Have you?
But that is not, nobody, not everybody understands that in our neighborhood. And I think if no other reason, just to say that is, would be very helpful.
I'm sure you're well aware that over a period of many years, there have been more than two or three people killed at that crossing. Were you aware of that?
There have been one killed, it was cited in the newspaper.
There's been more than that. I've lived in Bowling Green all my life. One may have been the most recent, but I'm talking about over a period of years, there has been more than one person killed at that crossing.
Correct. Well, and that begs another issue. I mean, that there, this is, it's bigger than a 12-minute discussion. It's, I mean, because that issue's not going to go away. In fact, my fear is, the fear of the neighborhood, is that that's actually going to escalate. And the solution to that, we fear, is there's going to become a fence that's going to be put up, some barrier now that's going to be put up, and then that's going to be a rail yard essentially, right on the edge of our neighborhood, right on the edge of a business, right behind the apartment complexes. And I just think it's a serious issue. The information that was in the paper seems to be incorrect in the saying that that was going to be a spur right there.
No, it's a siding.
And that's, that was the clarification that we've received.
There's no new construction that's going to take place there. There's simply-
Again, this is evidence of the information.
Yes, I understand what you're talking about.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
A few years ago, maybe about 18 years or so, when I was first on this city commission, when it first came on, CSX wanted it to close four or five crossings off of the tracks going in the westerly direction. Johnny Webb was the mayor, and in turn, they were going to donate some land to the city of Bowling Green to Operation Pride. We said no to CSX because it was a situation where you wouldn't be able to get on the west side without going all the way down to Morgantown Road or New Morgantown Road. And I say that to say that CSX, they're not bulldozing over us in any kind of a way. We've had discussions on this, and two things. One, we're going to do what is right, and we're going to protect our citizens in whatever we do. And I think that's the reason we thought that the closing of Robinson Lane was a good choice. I concur with the mayor. Maybe we should have done some things differently. We didn't, but I appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Howard, if we can put on the agenda for the next meeting, which would be?
June 7?
June 7. We'll set aside a time. I tell you what, since we meet at 4:30 in the neighborhood's workroom, why don't we put it at the end of the meeting, and that way they'll have time to get here?
Give me a time. Can you give me an estimate of that?
Depends on what's on the agenda.
June 7 is going to be a long agenda.
It's maybe 5:30, 6 o'clock, around in there. We will take recess and wait for them to come back if we end up early. And then we'll just make sure that the neighborhood hears the whole story from everybody on both sides.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Is that all right? All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Howard already checked in, so give him your name and address, please.
I totally understand. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. If there's anyone who supports the fairness ordinance, please, you're invited to stand up. I'm Nathan Morgen, and I'm an ally. Moments ago, we just recited aloud the Pledge of Allegiance, something dear to our hearts, something we all learned as children and as Americans. Moments ago, we all spoke the final six words of the pledge. We did it together, "With liberty and justice for all," six words that embody our nation. With liberty and justice for all. Not for some, not for those we choose, but for all, for every citizen of our country, state, county, and city. We're not a nation or even a city that should feel comfortable resting on injustice or silence. Louisville, Lexington, Frankfurt, Danville, Covington, Vicco, and even Morgantown have all enacted fairness ordinances so that their citizens can be protected equally. There are zero legitimate reasons for our great city of Bowling Green to not join the ranks of Kentucky cities that have enacted this truly simple ordinance. However, before me, I see five reasons that this ordinance has not been enacted. Our commission's lack of action, understanding, and empathy disappoints me greatly, as it does many of our citizens, and the time has come for a change. This common sense piece of legislation, if enacted by our city, would have taken a fraction of the time that has now been spent because of the inactivity of the commission. However, I can assure you that this has not wasted time to the 1,000 citizens who have signed a petition to get the fairness ordinance enacted, nor has it wasted time to the over 100 businesses that have signed on to show their support for the fairness ordinance as well. It is time, as a citizen and as a human. I cannot understand what else you would like to see before enacting the simplest of laws to protect your constituents and help your town grow. As I just mentioned, we have over 1,000 signatures, we have over 100 local businesses that directly contribute to our thriving economy that favor this piece of legislation. These are businesses that you eat at, shop at, and enjoy greatly. There is no reason to wait anymore. I see no one in these meetings coming to decry the fairness ordinance. Here I see people fighting for and hungry for a very simple change. We should listen to them and respond to them and not ignore them. Together, we can make this simple and positive change. Together, we can help erase hatred, bigotry, and discrimination from our beautiful city. Together, we can help continue to help Bowling Green grow. All we need is four words added to an existing piece of legislation, and those four words aren't, "Is there anybody else?" Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the first item on our agenda, second reading of ordinance BG 2016-15.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning Tracks of Land Containing 16.11 Plus or Minus Acres From RM2 Two-Family Residential To RS1D Single Family Residential Located At Fairground Addition Subdivision And Collet Addition Subdivision With Various Owners.
So move.
Okay.
By Hill, second by Dunning. This is second reading. Again, it's been provided for you in your pocket, passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. Is any other comments or discussion? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2016-16.
Ordinance Resoning Real Estate. Ordinance Resoning Tracks of Land Containing 1.21 Acres From GB General Business And P Public To HB Highway Business Located At 1473 Kentucky Street Presently Owned By Kentucky And Adams LLC.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon. Again, second reading, passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-78.
Municipal Order Approving The Promotion Of Pete A. Samios To The Position Of Athletic Supervisor In The Parks And Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. A vacancy occurred in this important position. We're here today to hear Brent Belcher's recommendation to fill this position. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. Febo. Mayor Commissioners, come to unite with another proud recommendation for a promotion from within our Bowling Green Parks staff. Mr. DeFebo hit on a, we had a resignation at the end of January of this year. We went out to public for applications. We got a total of 41 applicants. We entered, we did an interview, but 21 of those were transferred to Bowling Green Parks for consideration. We actually did seven interviews, and from those interviews, we are proud to recommend, let me get the name right, because I feel like his family deserves the credit and himself for this, but it's Panermedes Anastachios Samios, better known as Pete, is here. He's here with us today. Pete began as a referee with us in 1998, and then he got a part-time employment, began full-time employment. Let me check my numbers here, in 2008, and since that time, Pete, without a doubt, is one of the hardest-working individuals, not only in Bowling Green Parks, within the city. Very proud to say Pete's a coworker, and we know great things are in store for Pete. So that's why we're here today. Thank you.
End up, everybody. Please call and roll. I'm sorry, is any discussion? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Municipal Order 2016-79.
Municipal Order Approving The Career Path Advancement Of Adam D. Jepson To The Position Of Operations Technician 1 In The Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Febo.
I believe it was in 2006 that we created what is known as the Career Path Program In Operations And Public Works To Enable People Who Come To Work For Us To Advance Their Skills Through A Series Of Tests. We're here proudly tonight to say that Adam Jepson has achieved all those testing measurements, and we recommend him for operating tech one. I believe Adam's here.
Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-8.
Municipal Order Approving The Probationary Appointment Of Stacy L. Sanders To The Position Of Human Resources Specialist In The Human Resources And Risk Management Department.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
One of the earlier realizations of the city when we moved to be a more diverse workforce was the need to have the appropriate staffing to help us achieve that goal, which takes some work. Tiger Tulley, as you know, has ascended to the primary person to do that, and we're very happy with her performance and her obvious success lately. We need additional assistance to do some of the things that Tiger used to do, but is now devoted primarily to diversity. So we went out for procurement, and we had 200 applicants from that process. We're here tonight to recommend Stacy Sanders. She's worked in HR in two private companies, one of which was Fruit. We're pretty happy about her skill set, and we recommend her for approval to the board. I believe Stacy's here.
Congratulations to you as well. Any other discussion?
So that means she's going to be working with Tiger, is that right?
Yes.
Standing. Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-81.
Municipal Order Approving The Probationary Appointment Of Kristen N. Graves To The Position Of Community Center Coordinator In The Parks And Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by-
We employ a community center coordinator at the Moxley Center to help with the programs, activities, and events. We went out to initial advertisement and had 69 applicants. Through that vetting process, Brent, as leader of the department, felt that we needed to go out for, again, for a second advertisement, which we did. We had 42 applicants at that time. We interviewed eight, and from that distillation, we feel that Kristen Graves is the best candidate to help us coordinate the activities of Moxley. Kristen has a degree from WKU and has performed some recreational services at a place called Living Hope, so I believe Kristen is here.
Congratulations to you as well. Any other discussion? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Are welcome to slip out if you want. We're getting into the rest of the meeting now. Municipal Order 2016-82.
Municipal Order Authorizing And Accepting Bid Number 2016-30 For Fiscal Year 2016 Sidewalk Construction Program Related To The Josephine Street And Collet Avenue Project From Carter-Douglas Company LLC Of Russellville, Kentucky In The Amount Of $148,338.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
As the commission knows, we're a community development block grant community entitlement community, and we've learned over the years it's best to aggregate our investments in the neighborhood. To that end, Brent Childers has developed what is known as the Neighborhood Reinvestment Area, in which we'll concentrate CDBG and other city resources to effectuate concentrated repairs in neighborhoods that are at risk. We're here tonight, one of the flagship projects under this revitalization strategy is to install 1,200 linear feet of sidewalk curb and gutter on Josephine Lane and Collet. We had three bidders, of which Carter Douglas is the lowest. Brent's here, if you would like him to take a victory lap about the program.
I'll answer questions.
Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-83.
Municipal Order Authorizing A Change Order To The Contract With Contractor's Floor Covering Of Bowling Green, Kentucky In The Amount Of $34,737 Related To Bid Number 2016-41 Awarded Through Non-Competitive Negotiations.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
As the commission knows, we are undertaking the replacement of floor covering in the main foyer at the police department. Doug Hawkins, ever mindful of the look of the building, has asked us if we'd be interested in replacing all of the tile through the hallways and in the kitchen area. We thought it was a reasonable request. We had the contractor there, and so we're here tonight to ask you to approve a change order to allow us to do the whole job, so to speak, so we're not coming back here two years later with the same problem. So Doug's here, if you want to hear about the extra need, but we felt it was reasonable, and we thought we should go with it.
I'll answer questions. Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-84.
Municipal Order Authorizing And Accepting Bid Number 2016-43 For Records Retention Dry Sprinkler System Project From Vulcan Fire Systems Incorporated Of Nashville, Tennessee In The Amount Of $99,100.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
Believe it or not, this process, we do produce these records that are important for history and for other people, and we have a responsibility to maintain those in a reasonable way and by law. Throughout the city and various buildings, we have records tucked here and there, as well as in private storage areas. So one of the goals that we have, and as you know, in our retreat, was to build our first records retention facility and program. The first step in that is to put in the sprinkler system, it's a specialized sprinkler system, to allow us to save the records. We went out to bid, we only had one bidder for the system, so we're here tonight to ask you to approve the dry Vulcan fire systems of Nashville to allow us to start the process of putting in our first records retention facility and program.
Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2016-85.
Municipal Order Approving The Continuation Of A Contract With Community Action Of Southern Kentucky Incorporated For Transportation Services For Fiscal Year 2017.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
We partner with Community Action Of Southern Kentucky To Provide Transportation Bus Services To People In Our Community. We have a two-year renewal, we have an arrangement with them to renew the contract every so often, I believe, every two years. Is that correct, Brent? Two years? Every year, excuse me. And the rough amount of the contract, which will be established by what the feds and the state actually give us, is about $1.2 million. For this money, Community Action is responsible for providing transportation services. I think Ken is here, if you have any questions. Donna here?
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions from Community Action.
I already gave Ken down the road before the meeting started.
But this is just a renewal of a relationship we already had with them. Brent's here, if you have any nuance about the interaction between these funds and Community Action.
I'll answer questions.
One comment, I'd just like to say that I've noticed the improvement in the services over the years, and they continue to get better and better, so I'm happy for them. They do a good job.
Else? Please call and roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Didn't he make an amendment to take out the tornado shelters you called bus shelters?
Municipal order 2016-86.
Municipal order authorizing and approving an agreement through non-competitive negotiations for professional engineering services for the Parks and Recreation Department Lover's Lane Soccer Complex restroom pavilion expansion project with Branstad or Carroll Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky in the total amount not to exceed $31,000.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by...
I think it would be understatement to say that soccer is not a hot sport in Bowling Green any time. I live near the Lover's Lane Soccer Complex and it's always packed. One of its needs, and the need you recognize, was to build a new restroom pavilion to meet the needs of both players and their family. We wanted to fast-track this. We sunshined it to a retreat. We're here tonight to ask you to allow us to hire Branstad or Carroll to bring this project in from, to bid. It's also important to note that we in-house and Public Works Department are also looking at developing some walking trails at Lover's Lane. We would design in-house. There would be both an internal loop and an external loop. We'll do that on our own, but we thought we should mention that today, that we have that greater vision. But this part's just for the bathrooms, which are greatly needed, as well as a pavilion representative of the organizations that play there. Brent's here, if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2016-87.
Municipal order accepting donation from John and Linda Kelly Family Charitable Foundation to expand the scope of services of Camp Happy Days.
Start.
By Hill, second by Denning, Mr. Febo.
This is a simple resolution to thank John and Linda Kelly for $19,138 to help expand Camp Happy Days to special needs adults over 18 years of age, so allow us to add the counselors needed to provide the quality of care needed. We obviously want to thank John and Linda, and Brent's here, if you have any questions about the program or how we're going to use the money.
After the city, we want to thank the Kelly family. This is many years they've been helping us by participating in the Camp Happy Days program, and it's very helpful to us. Thank you so much. Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2016-17.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 80.69 acres from AG Agriculture and OPC Office Professional Commercial with a general development plan to PUD Planned Unit Development with a general development plan located on Lover's Lane presently owned by Green Hills Development Partners LLC.
So move.
Second.
Perrigen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben Peterson's here, if you would, he would entertain any questions you may have.
Questions over the pack. I think it's only voted unanimously for the project. Please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Municipal order 2016-88.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park for concerts in the park.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time of year again where concerts in the park are going to be occurring. That relationship between us and DRA is reflected in the lease, and I think it'd be appropriate for Gene Harmon to outline the parameters of the lease. Gene?
This is our typical, I guess, continuation of many-year agreement with DRA for the Friday night concerts in the park. The main reason they're coming for us, they have to have permission and consent from the city to be on that property to apply for the liquor license. That's the major reason we come. Normal typical conditions in this is that, you know, they have to keep it clean, they have to maintain it, you know, basically lease it to them so they can then put it on their ABC application. I mean, this is like, I forgot how many years, but a long time of years we've done this.
Provide insurance.
Excuse me.
They provide insurance as well.
Yes, they do. Liability and liquor liability as well.
I'll answer questions. Program going again, so please call the roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
That's the last voting item we have on the agenda. We have a presentation now on the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2016-17. Mr. Febo, you got a crew to come up tonight.
Mayor and commission, it's my pleasure, again this year, to present to this board 2016-17 budget. This is a process, as you know, which starts with the will of this board, as expressed to me and the city manager and to the senior management staff, brought to life with the input of our employees and department heads, as well as our contract agencies, and formed into a recommendation through the efforts of what is known as the Budget Team. Members of that team are myself, Katie Schaller, Jeff Mizel, Michael Grubbs, and Aaron Ballou. After I'm done with this initial preamble, they will take turns presenting elements of the budget. You, as the Board of Commission, have until June 30th to review and make changes to, and hopefully approve, the budget before you. Every budget has a theme. The last five years, the city has been fighting a tenacious recession that has handicapped our ability to do a number of things. That recession is now over. The city is enjoying modest growth, but I think it's important for us to remember that even during the most difficult of times, this board and your staff still provided basic services. We still were able to provide highly prioritized capital needs. We never cut public safety positions during that whole five-year period. We added no new debt. We didn't do the illusion of saying everything's okay by taking from fund balance. We essentially cut our cost footprint. There's no secret sauce here. We're doing better today because we, for two reasons. One is that we have a lower cost footprint that was created by the hard times of the last five years, and also because we went without many needs, and finally, things are improving, as you can see by our revenue forecast. The challenge this year will be to try to meet some of those legitimate pent-up demands without putting new unsustainable pressure on our operating budget. That's our challenge this year. Hopefully, this balance was accomplished in the budget that you will hear. You'll hear presentations on revenue, operating expenses, capital, debt load, and contractual Some of the highlights, for the 14th year, it'll be no tax increase recommended. We have also, are asking you to increase our, right off the top, fund balance from 20% to 25%. We're proud to say that our AA2 bond rating is still intact. We're also proud to say that we're going to be spending $15 million for our community. It's an important note, since 2008, the hard times, because of our ability to reduce our cost footprint and to husband our money over the years, we were able to avoid $33 million in debt by paying for cash. If you look around this room, one of the fruits of those efforts are this city hall. In this budget, we continue the big three. That would be sidewalks, stormwater, and paving. Especially notable is the fact that the paving budget has been increased 53% to $2 million, the highest amount ever put. I've been here 10 years, and during that time, except for the early period, we haven't hired any police officer. We're proud to recommend that the city add two new police officers. They're really not new. We have them on the street now. We're just officially funding the position, but it will increase our patrol census over time. We have in this budget a modest increase for employee wages, and we continue our aggressive efforts to help our partners create jobs in this community. Hopefully, this budget reflects what our citizens want from their city government. One, to deliver the best possible services at the lowest appropriate cost. Two, to foment and partner with others to create new jobs. Three, to invest in this place we call home and do it by living within its means. Next, I would, let's start the process. I asked Jeff Lashley, Jeff Lashley, sorry, Jeff Mizel, sorry, to come forward. He's a man of great integrity and great professionalism, and he's here to present to you the revenue picture of this, of this city. Jeff?
Going to talk to you a little bit, going to give you an overview of all funds, and then we'll probably, we're going to, we will focus on the general fund for the most part and the revenue side. Would like to just touch on a few things before we get started. We take a conservative but realistic approach in our revenue projections. I think you all have observed that over the years. What this does, it helps set parameters for the expenditure budget, and it provides us some margin of error. Having a margin of error with revenues, I think, is a prudent strategy because it provides for better resiliency, and if and when leaner times come, we have that cushion to lean on. Another benefit of this realistic approach, what I'll call a realistic approach with revenues is that when you keep operating expenses under control, any revenue growth can be applied to the capital project funding, like Kevin mentioned. And this is another reason, another way we've been able to keep tax rates low with no increases since 2003, and it's also provided funding for capital projects and allowed us to avoid new debt issues. We haven't issued debt since 2008 with the ballpark, and this has also resulted in a steady reduction of our outstanding debt, existing debt. And what this does is it gives us a better opportunity when we do have refinancings to come along, gets us better interest rates, having that steady trend of reducing our existing debt. Most of the projections you're getting ready to see are based on nine months through March. It's usually all we have to go through, go with. We're just now receiving Aprils in this week, but we're based it on nine months, then we look at the last three months of the prior year, which is FY15, and then we try to project how we're going to finish out the year. We take those projections, and we make the decision of whether or not we can sustain it going forward, or if there's other circumstances that point differently, different trends. So most revenue lines are basically, we're going to just reflect the current reality of things and current state of affairs, and we're basically, in a lot of cases, most cases, adjusting the FY16 budget to reality and then what we think we can sustain going forward. So the first slide here. Where am I pointing to, Katie? First slide gives you a comparison of the FY16 adopted to the FY17 recommended. As you can see, we're recommending, all funds are going to go to about a million, or yeah, 1,111 million, sorry. And that is about a 9% growth versus the FY16 adopted. And then skipping down there, the general fund is showing about 8% growth, $65,073 compared to the $60,000, $260,000 for this current year. We think we're probably going to finish pretty close to the $65 million this year, so when you really compare it to actuals of this year, it's, again, going to be a really very flat conservative budget. This next slide here is just your all funds by category. The taxes there would be your property taxes and your general fund, as well as your insurance premium taxes in the fire improvement fund, showing 5.4% there. Occupational taxes, we take in those in three different funds. It's the general fund, Parks Improvement Fund, and the Job Development Fund, showing about 9% there. We'll look at the general fund here in just a second. The license and permits line there, the big increase there is 22%, 23%. A lot of that's going to be found in your building fees, planner view fees, and electric permit fees in ABC. As you know, there's a lot of activity going on out there, construction, especially the trans park and other places. We're relying Brent's advice there with what the future looks like, and we think this budget needed adjusting, so we're adjusting it up about $250,000. I think most of that's in the general fund. The intergovernmental is, I'm sorry, the, whoop, go back. The intergovernmental is all your grants and your other funds like Section 8, BG Transit, CDBG, Greenways, Homeland Security, 911, liquid fuel tax and coal mineral tax. We're looking at a slight increase there, about 3.6%. The fees, biggest piece of those at $3,173 is the WKU payment that we get for their debt service on the Diddle Arena bonds. I know it's a funny place for it, but we couldn't really classify it anywhere else, so that's a big part of that. It's about $2.6 million a year that we receive, and we're not out any money on that bond issue for the Diddle Arena project that was done back in 2003. Other things in that category include property tax collection fees for the city schools, and then some public safety fees and code enforcement. Charges for services here, biggest piece of that is the fleet lease maintenance payments, about 1.9, and then you got your Parks and Rec, that's including golf and aquatics now, and then your miscellaneous line there includes things like your healthcare premiums paid by employees, employers, your PNF contribution, the money coming back in for the ITA debt service from the county, 800 radio fees, rental income, interest, all that kind of stuff. And then transfers in is all your transfers between funds that occur. This is two looks here of your all funds, how the money comes in, and your general fund. As you can see, the biggest piece of the pie on both sides is your occupational fees, 70% in the general fund, and about 43% overall in all funds. Next piece in the general fund is your property taxes and other taxes, and then on all funds, though, it happens to be your transfers that go back and forth. Next slide here, moving along as we're getting ready to get into the general fund. This is kind of a five-year look back, going back to FY12. As you can see, FY12 is kind of the first year we start recovering from the recession. I'll show you a 10-year, just a second, but FY12 to FY17 that we're projecting is about a $15 million growth, and that's about a 20, I think at a 26%, 28% overall growth, which is an average of about 5% or 6% a year, which has been pretty steady. The 2014 to 15 increase there, the 53.6% to the 58.9% includes the addition of golf and aquatics to the general fund. Here's your look back to FY07. FY07 was the last year of the 2% occupational tax. Full effect of that went into FY08, and then, as you can see, we kept adjusting down to '09. FY09 to '10 was a little flat, no real increase, and then recession was going on about that same time, too. And our lowest point of the recession really hit us in FY11, and as you can see after that, we've kind of climbed out of it from '12 to '16. Now, I'd like to go into just basic categories on the general fund. We're projecting property tax growth this year of about 4.9% in the general fund, roughly $550,000, and then that includes... And then, uh, that includes, uh, your motor vehicle, your personal property, your real estate property. Uh, we're basing this on the fact that we've got a preliminary assessment from the PVA that showed about a five point nine percent growth. So it's really good. Uh, I think about three point six of it for, was for existing growth and we had about two point three in new property growth. Um, other taxes there include your insurance premium taxes, along with your bank franchise and your telecommunications tax showing a little bit of growth there, too. About four point two percent. And as you know, here's our biggest piece, the occupational taxes. We are gonna project about an eight point eight percent growth overall, uh, on occupational. Breaking that down, your withholding and nets at the one point five percent, we still separate it between one point five and the point three five. So we can look back and see what's true growth and what's due to the fact in the, the tax rate change. Maybe we get a little further down the road, we can, we look, start combining it again, the one eight five. Showing about, we're gonna do about a six percent increase in nets. And we're gonna do about a two, a nine point five percent increase in your withholding fees. Uh, the surface enhancement fees represent another six hundred and sixty-four thousand increase. And, um, ten-year average on occupational tax growth is running about four point four percent. Five-year average is three point seven, and then a three-year average, we've had some good years here recently. We're looking at a five point nine percent growth, three-year average growth there. Uh, next one is your license and permits. This is where your building fees, planner view fees, electric permit fees in ABC come into play. Projecting about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of growth in that category. General fund grants, really, there's not much to speak of there anymore. We've moved most of those out to the other, uh, special revenue funds. Uh, next slide is your charges for services. This includes your cemetery, uh, along with school tax, city school tax collection fees, public safety fees, code enforcement fees, uh, Section Eight inspection fees and fireworks. Uh, showing pretty flat there, not much growth anticipated, we're gonna keep that about the same. Same thing for Parks and Rec, uh, looking about, uh, very conservative there, uh, on prop, and Parks and Rec, including golf and aquatics. And then this last slide would be, uh, your miscellaneous. And what we're doing there is miscellaneous includes things like interest earnings, uh, rental fees, uh, sale of, sale of property. We've had really, uh, good success with our auctions, thanks to Maryland, uh, making some money there with our turning over some old assets. And so we, uh, increased that budget, I think about seventy-six thousand. And then the other rest of that increase is based on interest. We've, we've put some money back into play and invested it. Uh, we had about five or six million in, in general fund. We were kinda waiting to see what, if we needed it or not. We put that back into play with some, some decent investments and we anticipate some increased interest earnings on that money going forward. And then the other line there is your transfers in, that's the money coming back from Heartland Development Area back into golf. So that's your, uh, here's your summary in, in a nutshell again for the general fund. Looking at an eight percent overall increase from FY sixteen adopted to FY seventeen recommended. And I can, I guess, take questions if you want to now, or.
Questions from Mr. Mizel?
However you wanna do it. But I'm gonna turn things over to Katie to, uh, to enter, to explain the expenditure budget.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm gonna turn your attention to the expenses. And again, we're just gonna kind of look back to the first slide we had. Uh, compares our revenues and expenditures for the adopted year for FY sixteen compared to where we think we're gonna end FY sixteen, uh, to where we're projecting to budget for FY seventeen. The FY seven, FY sixteen adjusted budget, uh, you'll notice we do have, uh, a deficit there of about five point four million. Uh, we don't actually expect to, um, spend sixty-five point eight million by the end of this fiscal year, but that's where we are right now. At the end of each year, we close out the budget, carry projects, carry money forward for projects and open POs. And so that projects that number forward a little bit further on the expense side. For FY seventeen, we propose to use just over about four point two million dollars of previously saved money to balance out the all funds budget. Uh, most of this is, uh, related to capital projects and purchases, basically three point seven million of that amount. And then we also have anticipated increases in the healthcare fund, that makes up the four point two million there. And for the third consecutive year, as previously mentioned, we're not proposing to use any fund balance to balance the general fund. In order to break these categories down just a little bit further, uh, we're looking at the FY seventeen all funds budget at this particular slide. In FY sixteen adopted budget, uh, we're projecting twelve percent increase, uh, basically from sixteen to seventeen, twelve point three million dollars. And the increase is primarily in, uh, personnel expenses, which we'll go into further detail later on in this presentation. The proposed capital projects and purchases account for the majority of the increases in contractuals, fixed assets and transfers out. The nearly one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase in subsidies is mostly due to the expected increase in the TIF money to be paid out next year. And the debt service continues to decline, as mentioned previously, with the refinancing, uh, that we've been able to do in the past couple of years. Excluding capital, the all funds budget is up about two point, the all funds operating budget is only up about two point three percent or two point one million dollars compared to the FY sixteen operating budget. We feel that's a pretty modest growth. From these two pie charts, you can see that public safety expenditures account for over twenty-five percent of the all funds budget and thirty-nine percent of our general fund budget. The other remaining departments combined account for forty-eight percent of the all funds and forty-one percent of the general fund, with debt and transfers out rounding out the rest of the pie. With the general fund, uh, accounting for about fifty-six point five percent of the all funds budget, we have a tendency to wanna focus more in detail on the general fund versus any of the other funds that we have. And the changes in expenditures from FY sixteen to seventeen, you can see basically an eight percent increase that is based on the revenue projections that we have. We are taking into account, uh, those revenue projections and we're covering all the operating expenses and the included, uh, eight million dollars in capital projects, uh, for this next year in FY seventeen. You'll notice, too, from the five-year look back, since FY two thousand and twelve, there has been a twelve point six million dollar increase in expenditures. Of that, two point five million is attributable to the aquatics and golf, which came in in FY fifteen. Again, a ten-year look back here, we're comparing our personnel expenses, which is our largest expense of about fifty-six point five percent of the general fund budget with the total expenditures. And again, very similar to the revenue, uh, chart that we showed previously, you can see that the dip during the recession and now we're coming out of that, uh, with some modest growth. However, you will note that the personnel line has remained relatively flat, if not decreased, uh, through the years, despite giving COLA step adjustments and dealing with changes in the CERS rates, which are beyond our control. This has been accomplished, accomplished in large part by right sizing the workforce, combining jobs, changing some of the full-time positions to part-time, eliminating positions where feasible, and holding non-public safety positions vacant for a period of time. The established cost for the FY sixteen, uh, budget includes, the estimated cost, I'm sorry, for the FY sixteen budget also reflects some of the overfilling, uh, that we've done, the overhiring for police and fire positions in anticipation of upcoming retirements. Again, with personnel being the largest expense type that we have, this chart breaks down the various components that make up our personnel costs and provide more detail to the variations of, uh, that are attributed to the increases. The other personnel cost line includes medical, dental, vision, life insurance, workers' comp and unemployment expenditures. And then the total other benefits line is primarily tuition reimbursement and cell phone stipend reimbursements to employees. Overall, we're looking at about a three point five percent increase. Uh, we did have some CERS changes, non-hazardous went up, hazardous went down, went down, that helped offset those expenses. As the expenditure budget is prepared, and the budget team works on this with the departments, uh, we scrutinize very diligently all of the expenses that departments have, and all the department heads will tell you. Uh, we sit in those meetings and we say, okay, can you reduce this? We look at the history of something else and it, we really do look at those line items. And we consider the historical trends, we look at all the actual needs, and we factor in other, uh, items of determination to make them, the budget be the most appropriate, the right amount for each of those line items. We do cut costs and we extract savings wherever we can. Increases in software maintenance in the IT budget, additional elective special education for police, and additional advertising money for HR to help reach more potential applicants are what make up the increase in the contractual services line. The increase in supplies, about two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, is primarily due, uh, to athletics taking over the Bowling Green Athletic Association process with softball programs and different, uh, other programming. We've also increased our maintenance supply budget to purchase additional salt product in order to replenish our stock from this last year's winter, which was pretty extensive. Uh, so we have increased that budget about forty-seven thousand dollars. And then the rest of it, uh, in, is made up in supplies for replacing some AR rifles in the police department, that's a capital project we have. And then also to continue the expansion of the surveillance cameras at the various park locations. And we have two additional parks, uh, included in this year's budget. And that makes up basically what your supply lines are. And then the fixed assets are actually going down because we do have fewer proposed capital purchases in the next budget year. Yes, sir?
What did you say was in, in the contractual services?
Uh, contractual services include, uh, any professional services that we have. It includes utilities, it includes, uh, training, special education, uh, construction costs, uh, other improvements. And what we've got right now is software maintenance and the IT budget is one of the driving factors in that increase. Uh, and then we had some additional, uh, special education costs related to police. And then we also had some additional advertising money for the HR budget. Again, that goes along with our proposal to continue the diversification of our, um, workforce. Any further questions on that? And those changes actually net out. I mean, there, there's several other changes that occurred that were decreases. Those are just the, the three probably largest increases that we, uh, experienced. But it nets out to only about a fifty-four thousand dollar increase in contractual services, despite the fact that we have utility rates significantly increasing next year. The majority of the increase in the general fund subsidies and assistance is related to the proposed increase in agency appropriations, which we'll discuss further at the end of this presentation. An increase in contingency funds for FY seventeen, which is your miscellaneous line, is proposed for next year. Uh, one, because we are proposing a sixty-five million dollar budget, we feel like we need to have a little bit more money in contingency. And that five hundred thousand is still less than one percent of the total general fund budget. And that money will help us cover any unforeseen, um, things that may happen throughout the year. We could have some additional costs that we're not aware of. Pricing could go up on other products or utility rates could increase mid-year, um, more so than they already expected to do. So we have that money available, um, to use as needed. But we do look at that, we use that money very carefully, we monitor it, and we don't access it unless necessary. The increase in the transfers out is directly related to the proposed capital improvement program for the FY seventeen budget. As Mr. DeFebbe mentioned earlier, we are increasing, uh, the general fund contribution for the overlay program of eight hundred thousand dollars to make that a total of a two million dollar budget. Part of that money will come from the liquid fuel tax and then eight hundred thousand of it is coming from general fund. We're also increasing the money going toward the new sidewalk construction program by a hundred thousand dollars. The past couple of years, we've done, traditionally, we've done about four hundred thousand dollars a year to that program. This next year, we're doing five hundred thousand. And then we're also addressing, as previously mentioned, um, some past due and really needed equipment replacement, uh, for public works and Parks and Rec. When I was looking at those, uh, budgets and those requests, we have, um, equipment that dates back to the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. So it's, it's time to replace some of those things. And we're also putting two point three million dollars into expanding the park and recreation facilities and features, uh, which were proposed in the Parks Master Plan. The general fund also continues to support capital projects for stormwater mitigation, small house improvements, small house road improvements, and then technology enhancements. Again, all of that is identified in the transfers outline and makes up that three million dollar increase. The general fund operating budget, when we take all the capital out of the picture, is only two point six percent up compared to last year. Uh, and this equates to about a one point four million dollar increase, the vast majority of which ties directly back to changes in personnel, uh, that we're proposing, cost of living adjustments and step increases. Again, we'll present that in just a few more minutes. And that concludes my portion of this, uh, particular part of the expenditure budget. I wanna turn it over to Erin Ballou, and she's gonna talk about, um, our debt service requirements, our projected fund balance, and then take a final look at the expenditures for.
Katie, before she steps away. Thank you. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, thank you. Okay, this chart summarizes the debt service requirements for the recommended FY two seventeen year, um, compared against the current two thousand and sixteen year. You'll see that we're recommending a budget of about a little over five million dollars. And that's actually a decrease, um, compared to our current estimated year that we're in now. Um, so we're actually recommending five hundred and sixty thousand dollars less than this year due to the recent refinancings that we've done in about the last year or so. Uh, those three refinancings that are affecting this new year budget are the refinancings for the ITA bonds, um, the ballpark bonds, and then the two thousand and seven bonds.
Can you step just a little closer to the microphone? You sound like me talking.
Oh, sorry. Um, it's also important to note that we're again, um, recommending no new debt in two thousand and seventeen. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we haven't, um, recommended any debt since two thousand and eight was the last issue we had, um, with the ballpark. And also, um, whenever you exclude the ballpark, all of our debt outstanding right now will be paid off by two thousand and thirty-four. So within about eighteen, twenty years, the only debt we'll have left as of right now will be the ballpark bonds. And those are a few years beyond that. This next slide shows the full funding picture for all of the city's debt service, um, not just the general fund. Um, you'll see the general fund is the biggest slice of this pie, forty-two point seven percent. That, as you saw, it's five million dollars next year. Um, the next biggest piece are reimbursements. Those are from WKU for a hundred percent of their debt that's on our books. And also from Warren County, where they pay us half of the ITA debt service. Um, next year, that's estimated to be about three point seven million from those two entities. Um, the special revenue funds, which consists primarily of the fire improvement fund and also the job development fund, that makes up about twenty percent of debt service funding. Next year, it's about two point four million dollars. And finally, the convention center is the enterprise, um, fund. It's about, or it provides about six percent or seven hundred thousand dollars of debt service funding. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, about half of that special revenue debt will, um, fall off our books, it'll be retired. And then the year after that, in two thousand and nineteen, that enterprise debt will also be retired. So those two pieces will, um, be smaller in the coming years. Okay, this slide shows, um, what we expect for a beginning fund balance in the general funds next year. We are estimating a beginning fund balance of around twenty million dollars. Um, that includes our, um, expenditure and revenue projections, um, staff has forecasted through June thirtieth. That also includes, um, all the recommendations we're making to you tonight for the FY seventeen budget. So of that twenty million dollars we have after those things, um, you see the next line is the committed fund balance. Um, we also refer to that as our reserves. Um, that is equal to twenty-five percent of our adopted revenue budget in the general funds for FY seventeen. Um, in the past, that's been twenty percent, so we're recommending to increase that to twenty-five percent. Um, our current balance in that account now is about twelve million dollars. So we're looking to increase that by over four million dollars next year. That increase, um, will be used to help us safeguard against the volatility and, um, as you noticed, our biggest revenue in the general fund is occupational wages, or wage taxes. Um, so that additional four million dollars will help us offset any changes in that. And, um, as Jeff mentioned, it will also help our credit ratings in the future, where we go to do additional refinancings. go to do additional refinancings. It'll help us secure debt at lower interest rates, so our debt service cost will continue to be low. After that, you notice, Katie mentioned, that we are using no fund balance next year to balance our general fund. So that $3.8 million you see will be available for other items that may come up throughout the year. So any significant events that occur, or significant repair expenses, that $3.8 million will be available. This slide compares expenditures, the total general fund expenditures that Katie started on for FY17 compared to FY16. You'll see that's an 8% increase this year, FY17 over 16. But that also corresponds with what Jeff showed you with the revenue budget. So that 8% equals about $4.8 million. Another way to look at that, Katie mentioned, our operating budget is only up 2.6% next year. But if you look at our capital budget, our capital budget in the general fund increases to $8.1 million next year. Currently, in this current year in FY16, it's only 3.7. So that's a $4.4 million increase in our capital budget. And you can notice that's going to be in the miscellaneous and transfer outlines, where we're up 32% next year. And this slide compares all expenditures, expenditures in all funds by type to the general fund. It's pretty easy to see the personnel expenses are definitely the biggest piece of both of those pies. In the general fund, personnel expenditures are 56.5% next year. And in all funds, it'll be about 35%. Yet even though those are the largest percentages on those pies, it's important to note that last year, those percentages were even more. So even though we've increased our personnel costs, or proposing to increase our personnel costs in FY17, we've been able to control that cost to where, as part of the whole city costs, it's actually a smaller piece of those pies in '17. Okay, that's all I have. I'll hand it off to Mike for discussion on personnel and capital improvement.
Any questions for Ms. Ballou? Thank you very much. Mr. Grubbs, you look very nice this evening.
Thank you, sir. I had a request from the mayor to read all my slides tonight, so we'll be taking...
No, you didn't say that.
I do have the opportunity to talk to you more specifically about how we're going to spend all this money that we're going to bring in this year. So I kind of have the fun job. First, I'll talk about personnel services. Obviously, we have a number of recommendations in the budget pertaining to wages, positions, and the composition of our workforce. Most of the $1.4 million that was mentioned that the general fund will go up this year for non-personnel, non-capital, excuse me, is for personnel. This is for raises for part-time, full-time employees, a few additional positions, one upgrade, and then also some changes in our benefits, some of which are mandated costs. This chart is one that the budget team has looked at periodically over time, so it's interesting to compare our two largest, our largest revenue source and the largest expenditure category. If you look at 2010, the lighter colored number is the occupational fee, and the darker is the personnel cost. Back in 2010, our personnel costs were more than what we bring in with our largest revenue source. Now, we're in the other situation where there's a difference of $2.5 million, more that we're bringing in in occupational fees compared to our personnel costs, which obviously provides additional money for capital. We are recommending a cost of living adjustment for employees this year, and the recommendation is 2%. Given here an example of the COLA that we gave the last two years, so it's somewhat in line with what we've done the last two years. The number is higher than what the increase in the Consumer Price Index was for last year. We feel justified in recommending the slightly higher amount, partly because of market conditions having improved, and then also employee take-home pay is going to be affected by some things that I'll go over in a couple of minutes. We also provide eligible employees with a step or merit increase. That will cost, be an average of about 1.27 across the workforce. Employees that are in the lower part of their pay grade, the percentage is a higher increase than if you're at the top of the pay grade. But that's an average of 1.27. For an entry-level police officer or firefighter, it's around 1.64%. But not all employees get that step increase for various reasons, so the overall impact on the budget's going to be just a little bit over 1%. I will also recommend an increase for our part-time and seasonal employees. An average of 2% COLA is around 20 cents an hour. In all cases, we adjust the minimum and the maximum pay rates in our pay schedule by whatever the COLA is. So that helps us with attracting new employees also because of the discussion nationally about increasing the minimum wage. This also helps to prepare us in case that increase does occur. And those employees, part-time employees or seasonal employees who've been with us over a year, also eligible for a 10 cent step increase. And elected officials don't benefit as much as the other employees, but by state law, you're only eligible for the CPI increase issued by the Department of Local Government, which will be 0.7%. So again, being elected official doesn't really pay off that well. There are a couple other adjustments that will have to be made that relate to state. Sworn personnel, police and fire will get an increase in their training incentive to $4,000 a year from the current $3,100. There is an impact to the city budget because of our costs for overtime and for fringe will go up, and those are not, they're not reimbursed by the state. And also, employees participating in the retirement system, their contribution has not been subject to FICA or FICA Medicare taxes due to a court case and IRS regulations. Those contributions are going to be taxable as of the 1st of January, so that's going to impact take-home pay for employees. The city budget is also impacted, but we have been budgeting the full cost. We just haven't been spending the full cost. So it didn't, it didn't really impact our budget, but it will impact how much the city is actually spending because of that taxable contribution. As far as classification changes, we do have one recommendation on a full-time position due to a change in job duties. The Public Works Inspector is going to take on doing subdivision inspections, so we felt that an upgrade was justified. We also have a number of part-time positions in parks and recreation that we are adding hours to, primarily for taking over duties for the Bowling Green Athletic Association. Those additional hours with all those part-time positions is the equivalent of 4.2 full-time equivalents, but none of those employees will be receiving employee benefits. We do have five new positions recommended. Already mentioned was, we're overfilled right now with police officers, and so we're going ahead and taking two of those positions that are currently filled and making them permanent, which will be the first increase since 2009. Already mentioned is we're getting ready to renovate part of the City Hall Annex for records retention, and we would hire a management coordinator to manage, organize and manage that facility. And then adding back two positions that we previously had and that were eliminated during the recession. One is a laborer position in public works operations to help during the winter months with snow removal and provide support the rest of the year, and that also would free up personnel to help with our inspections. And a position in public works administration office that was full-time, then was eliminated, then we brought back part-time, will be full-time again. We're also recommending several new part-time positions, most of which relate to BGAA. We're adding one seasonal position to help parks maintenance with additional work they've taken on. And we're adding 10 positions because of the BGAA situation, umpires and scorekeepers. This chart shows kind of overall what's happened with the city workforce over several years. But again, we're still down in terms of total full-time personnel comparing to 2008, and the all-other category is still down as well. So even though we're adding five full-time positions, the total number of full-time positions is still down compared to where it was several years ago.
How many full-time equivalents are there?
I don't actually know the full-time equivalent. The full-time total is 456, but when you add all the part-time, the part-time employees probably add another 180 FTEs. But full-time personnel is 456 in the new budget. We also want to show you the rate history with CERS. We have been fortunate over the last few years that the rates have slowed down, rate increases have slowed down. And as Katie mentioned, the hazardous duty rate dropped this year by 5.7%, but for non-hazardous, it's gone up 9.5%. We actually had a savings in this year's budget of $146,000 before you add in the COLA and the new personnel. Switching gears to the employee medical plan, we made some changes to the plan back in 2009, and we went four years without a significant increase in our costs. However, the last three years, we have seen increases. We've had some high claimants, and also the Affordable Care Act has had some impact on us. The budget next year does include a modest increase in premiums for employees. We're also making some changes to the prescription co-pay for the first time in 10 years. We're actually lowering the generic co-pay from $15 to $7. The preferred or formulary co-pay won't change, but there will be higher co-pays for non-preferred and specialty. But again, these are very reasonable compared to the kind of costs that are occurring, occurring in the market and that the city is actually incurring. This chart shows for you the total cost of the medical plan over the years, again, from 2008 to 12, basically no change. Then we had a spike in '13, a drop in '14, again, a raise in '15, and again, more in '16. So hopefully, the addition of our city care center, the Employee On-Site Health Center this year will help us with some of our costs. We'll also be getting a lot more deeply into wellness services as a result of that center. These charts, again, kind of summarize the total personnel expenditures. General fund as well as all funds, police and fire and the general fund are 61%, and the obvious other departments or groupings make up the bulk of that. Any, it's kind of in review. We're recommending the 2% COLA for full-time. The vegetarian impact, when you include the step increase, is about 3%. Again, a 20 cent an hour for part-time seasonal. We've got some rate relief with CERS. Employee take-home pay will be impacted by the change in the tax calculation on CERS as well as our change in premiums and the co-pay. And again, our full-time complement will still be lower than it was in 2009. Any questions on the personnel side?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Grubbs. Appreciate it.
I will move into the capital budget then. The CIP is our annual plan, where we determine and indicate what we're going to spend on public facilities, on our infrastructure, on equipment. Pretty much projects that are $25,000 or greater are included in the CIP, or if we have several pieces of small equipment that are grouped that are like, we list those in the CIP. This chart goes back 10 or 11 years and shows kind of an overall comparison of where we've been. 2007 being our great year when we had a capital budget of $33 million, debt of less than $9 million, and debt was just slightly over a quarter of the CIP. Then you hit our bad year of 2010, when our capital budget was half of what it was three years earlier. We had no money in the general fund budget that year for capital, and debt was 80% of the budget. So basically, we had no CIP that year. But then you'll see, as the years have gone by, we have slowly been able to increase the size of the CIP. The general fund piece of that has gone up. Debt has started to drop, and now debt is less than half of the CIP, which is obviously great news for us. And as previously mentioned by Erin, the CIP this coming year, while it's a total of about $27 million, $15 million of that is actual capital, actual capital projects. In the budget book, you all have a description of each of the projects that will be listed, so I'm not necessarily going to mention every single one. But what we do is go through and identify the capital projects compared to the strategic goal, strategic goal plans that the Board of Commissioners has set out. So this chart shows that 48% of the projects for this coming year are in the category we call community livability. And just as comparison, this year we're ending, that piece of the pie was 25%. So the community livability section has really increased. Facilities and equipment, this coming year will be 23%. This year, we're ending, it was 34%. So again, that shows we're putting much more into the community-type projects. And even though we expanded the budget for our facilities and equipment, as far as the piece of the pie, that will actually be a little bit less this coming year. Community livability for next year, total budget of $7.2 million. This year, it was $2.1 million. So immediately, anyone can see that the city is going to be putting a lot more money into projects that are going to benefit our citizens. Already mentioned are the sidewalk, the money for sidewalks, stormwater mitigation, a half a million dollars again. And the city has put in almost $4 million into this since the May 2010 flood. Parks and Recreation, $5.6 million. In the budget this year, this category was $300,000. So Parks is going to see a many-time increase for projects this coming year, thanks to the work that the city has done with the master plan. That includes the Preston Miller Soccer Complex, three fields and a restroom. Already mentioned is the work already underway, planning for Lover's Lane. We're proposing a spray park at Lampkin Park, improvements at Fountain Square Park, Shelter Two replacement at Covington Woods, and also replacing playgrounds at Caryacus and Pettigo, both of which would get larger playgrounds and have two separate playgrounds for age-appropriate Previously mentioned earlier during the regular commission meeting was the Bowling Green Reinvestment Area Neighborhood Improvement Program. You all approved sidewalk work. This program has been proposed for the last couple of years, and the city had already been setting aside money for work on the west side of town. The first target area is between Chestnut, the bypass Fairview and 14th. And you can see there are the other types of projects that are proposed by Neighborhood and Community Services. Street resurfacing, again, the city has increased the funds that will go toward this program, and we expect to be able to do about 12 miles of roadway depending on conditions. Small House Road, a project we've been preparing for the last couple of years. $1.1 million in the budget this year, but the total projects, the two phases, is $5.5 million that we'll be funding over multiple years, trying to widen the road between Campbell Lane, first to Highland Way, and then to Ridgecrest and beyond. And also putting in a signal at K Mill Road and the crossings. Moving to technology improvements, over $1.1 million. $400,000 would be in information technology, obviously different types of software for various departments, as well as equipment replacement and upgrades. Other public safety, over $700,000. Previously discussed, previously discussed the body worn cameras, which was presented to you separately by the Police Department. Of course, the bulk of that cost is actually for servers and technology and data, data software and editing. Another project we're proposing is a simulator for police firearms, and that's actually to be funded out of our Property and Casualty Fund because we know that this will help reduce any possibility of any liability claims by preparing police officers to have equipment available all the time where they can simulate the use of firearms and also have the opportunity for two officers to use it at the same time. We can use it for remedial training for new recruits, so a lot of opportunity there. A replacement of equipment, such as tasers and rifles, an alarm notification system replacement in our fire stations, and as previously mentioned, continuing the park surveillance cameras. This coming year, they would be at Lover's Lane Soccer Complex and Caryacus. Vehicle and equipment replacement, not sexy, but something we need to do. And we're proposing almost $2 million in this coming year budget for a variety of equipment replacement, and that's up from $1.2 million this year that we're completing. $1.2 million for facility improvements. I'm getting ahead of myself. Sloan Convention Center, which has a separate enterprise fund, over $800,000 for the roof, parking lot landscaping, and automatic doors. Doing work here at City Hall, replacing windows, doing painting, tuck pointing, and brick repair. The locker room and the fitness room at the police station has not been touched since the building opened, so we're going to do renovation there. And then part of the parking lot at the police station would be milled and repaved and restripped. Now, we have some money for other equipment, such as lobby furniture in the convention center, replacing one of the air conditioning units of police and the generator for the City Hall Annex. City Hall Annex. And this chart, again, kind of shows an overall history with the capital budget. You can see generally the debt, which is the middle section, has sort of remained flat if you compare 2008 to now. The General Fund, which pays for the projects, you know, dipped to zero, and now we're working our way up, and then you've got the total CIP, CIP is the dark number at the top. And again, debt was 80% of the capital budget in 2010, and it will be 44% in this coming budget. In review, this is the largest capital budget since 2007. As already said, we're using no fund balance, there's no new debt. 36% of what debt we have is being reimbursed by others. $5 million is the ballpark, I mean, there's a $5.1 million General Fund debt which includes Ballpark and ITA. Equipment replacement, again, I mentioned, mentioned it, and this is a really interesting slide for us. During the dark years, three-year period, we only spent a quarter of a million dollars on all equipment replacement. For Public Works and Parks, for a six-year period, was a half a million dollars. The last two years was 1.1 million, and this year, we're proposing 1.3. So a definite change in our budget now that we're able to do some equipment replacement, and I'm sure Parks and Public Works will be very appreciative of you approving the budget for next year. Just overall, final, we're continuing the priority community impact goals that have been established and also projects that were started in earlier years. We're increasing the use of our local tax revenues for projects such as street paving, sidewalks, and Small House Road. This allows us to replace equipment, to improve our facilities, and also enhance our technology. And we're continuing to set aside funds as we can for our future needs so that we don't have to take out debt. Any questions on the CIP? Okay, I'm going to turn it back to Katie, who will talk about agency appropriations.
We're almost done. We're nearing the conclusion. Okay. Agency funding for next year, we're proposing a 2% increase over the FY16 budget, almost $1.3 million. And you can see over time, over the last several years, we've actually reduced agency funding from over $1.6 million down to about $1.3 million this year. This particular chart identifies what we are recommending for each of the agencies. It also identifies what the agencies have requested. We, the requested amount from the agencies totaled about $83,500 more than the adopted budget in '16, and we are recommending to provide about 30% of an increase of that amount. The recommended amounts are identified, as I mentioned. Those agencies, most agencies that had received, that had requested an increase will get up to a 3% increase, and there are two agencies. The Drug Task Force is recommended to receive the amount requested to help offset a loss in federal grant funds, and Operation Pride is recommended to receive the balance remaining for taking over the Old Louisville Road mowing project. In past years, you'll note, the Welfare Center has been fortunate to receive some additional funding from the city through excess gas franchise fees that we've collected, over $200,000. We had a municipal order back in 2008 that directed this to take place. We continue it when we can. However, this upcoming and current fiscal year, we don't anticipate there to be any additional money to be provided through that since we are not projecting to even reach $200,000 in collection for gas franchise this year. There are a couple other items that do impact our agency funding and go along with it. One of those is the Dollar-for-Dollar Match that we provide of the employee pledges for United Way. The city matches what the employees have pledged, and that money is to be spent, our only restriction on it is that it should be spent in Warren County. Otherwise, we don't restrict how the United Way chooses to spend that.
How do we know?
Pardon me?
How do we know that that amount is spent in Warren County?
I'm supposed to receive each year a report back from United Way, and they let us know how they've spent that money. And then we've also set aside $10,000 for emergency management services to continue an expansion of the outdoor warning siren system in the city limits.
At one siren, is that the cost of one siren?
We try to, we want to make them digital, you know, high-tech, so we've been doing one a year to make sure the whole community is up, is, you know, advanced at a higher level of technology.
Airport grant matches, what are we matching there? Was that in there?
Yeah, we, we have currently $43,000 of unspent money that we have appropriated in previous budget years and just continued to carry forward, and so we haven't spent it yet. We're proposing not to add any additional money to that, but to continue to have that $43,000 available for next year and spend it. What they, we have, the airport presents to us, when they get an FAA grant, and the city has a match requirement for that, we approve those by municipal order at the board level, but we don't pay out until they actually have finished in that grant and they need to receive that reimbursement, so then they request it later. So you may see where we've approved some grants in the past year, but we haven't actually paid out. We did pay out a couple, though, this year. We had over $50,000 in the budget initially. We did pay out a couple this year that we had requested, that they had requested payment for, but again, we don't propose adding any additional money to that. We'll just continue to carry that $43,000 over. And the agency funding represents 2% of the General Fund expenditures, which is about where it's been over the last several years. At this point, the budget team would like to thank Laura Harris for helping us with the graphics this year for our budget document and this presentation, and then also Sean Weeks, who deserves some special recognition for his participation in the revenue budgeting process. So at this time, we've concluded our presentation. Do you have any additional questions or anything that you would like us to respond to?
I'm answering questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two questions regarding the agency funding, please. I believe it's been a budget, at least maybe two budgets ago, we had $80,000 set aside for BG Transit.
Yes.
Is that $80,000 still here?
Yes, yes, that $80,000 is still available. It has gone unspent. We will continue to carry that money forward appropriated for that purpose until a decision's been made on how that needs to be spent.
Okay, good. And there's been talk for funding 2-1-1 from United Way. What do we need to do about that?
The board just needs to decide if you want to do that, how much that needs to be, and then we can have a municipal order approved by the board to appropriate it. We will present the final agency funding recommendations at the second meeting in June so that at that point, you can decide how much you want specifically to go to each of these agencies. This is just the initial proposal. If you would like additional money added for United Way, that isn't currently, I don't believe, included in that municipal order, but we could add that money. We'd just take it from the contingency balance, so we would not, again, impact fund balance in any way. We would just work within the money we already have allotted.
When was that again?
The second meeting in June. So we'll present the budget ordinance essentially with the 1.27 million in for agencies for first reading at the, first meeting in June, on June 7th, and then at the second meeting, when we have the second reading of that budget, we would also have a municipal order to provide the actual appropriations for the agencies. And again, we can change that amount at any point. We just, we just include the 1.2 million in the budget, and we can take any additional funding that you'd like to direct toward there out of another source.
Is it better to have those changes before our first June meeting? Is that easier on you?
If there's agreement by the board, absolutely. We, if you want to come to a consensus right now, we can go ahead and adjust that within the budget ordinance before-
Or we would discuss it at that meeting?
Yes, either way.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to, first of all, thank the budget team for their hard work and this, the good background information that we've all received, and quite honestly, it's one of the best, best budget presentations I've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of budgets.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions?
Comments or questions?
At this point.
Other than to echo that, great job.
Great job.
The information here that you, we read before we came in, and I know you're summarizing it mainly for the public, but it's a wonderful document to help people understand what we're doing with their money that we take from them in taxes.
At risk of bragging, we do get an award for that, right? Don't we, every year?
Yes.
I guess we just bragged, so I, we do. I did a great job.
You deserve to brag. Great job.
I'd like to defer compliments to Katie and Aaron for that book because they do the bulk of the work on it, so I can't take any credit much for it.
I refer to it all year long. It's a great, great document. Thanks.
Thank you. When we do have the budget finally adopted and proposed, I do put that out on the website so that anyone can pull it up and look at it. We have documents that I believe go back to 2006 of the budget already out there. We'll also have a hard copy available in the lobby downstairs for anyone to come in and look at. We can certainly provide copies to anyone who would like to request those. We would charge 10 cents a page, though, if we did copies, but when we posted it on the budget on the website, then it's free to whoever wants to look at it and download it.
You post the entire thing?
We do.
Both, both notebooks?
No, the summary document, so the smaller notebook, is what we post. That gives the majority the information. We don't do the line item reporting. That gets a little bit cumbersome and tedious, but if anyone has questions about it or would like more information, we would be glad to provide it.
That's the last item on our agenda. We'll be going in closed session, so if, we'll give you just a few minutes to take a restroom break, and there'll be no vote coming out. No vote coming out. Thank you for tuning in.